This is my first time, second time.
Never know.
You get your cane, you got your cane, you're ready for Christmas.
Well, he wants you to walk.
I gotta ask that.
Yeah.
It's the way to Christmas.
I started right up.
We have a week seven days, but.
I'm sure.
I don't know.
So.
There's nothing to that, that's, that's true.
Thing is like, remember in the old days, you know, you used to pay Thanksgiving.
It's fire.
Right. Now.
It started with Black Friday, though. They started, they started doing it.
That's when they started to creep on.
Yeah.
Started to creep on.
All right.
Yeah.
So like Christmas day, they, they leave some of the artists and they have a content, you know?
It actually.
Right. It's like, right.
It makes me sad.
Yeah.
Flavor. Yeah. Then it's gone after that.
That's funny. Yeah. That's all probably.
Oh, my God.
Man, they started driving from Halloween.
Huh?
So this Halloween.
Yeah, I found that, I found the mayor. Hey. What's up? I'm sorry. Well, sure. No, he twisted his ankle. I know. And Sherri, he, he's not here anymore. He, he twisted his ankle. So I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read his thing when it comes to water sewer.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not starting nothing. We got five minutes. Definitely isn't there.
This is why, this is why I can't reason so much. All this I do. You haven't seen this before. I just wondered that because. Yeah. Yes. It's a. That's a letter. And it has to be timed in sixty days of the election. So he has.
Well, that's great.
Good thing is there's probably not one like that.
Amazing how dependent we are on computers. Outlook was down. Scary all day today.
Yeah.
You were fine?
Yeah. Apparently we had to send letters. So. No. Yeah. Must have been through people. And then people that. They don't say good. The world sent a letter into that. There's no story. And there's. Found out what was saying. Final what you did. This happens. That's not.
Would you?
Well. That I'm sure. I'm sure. If just. So. You know. He really was home. Something humorous. They had very bad. Then I got. Change time is. When is that? Okay. That was quite. Certainly. Sorry. I'm not the same. For six twenty-nine.
They show you that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Really sure. Um, it's I'm seeing where I'm. I first came in. Similarly.
This is important. This thing is. Like what about this? Cause you had.
And I'm trying to pick you up.
Apparently. I haven't been in this. The company.
YouTube.
Yeah. I said, well, you mean I hit their business thing. And so. I'm real. I can tell you. And. It takes.
Big noise.
Like everything stops.
There and then.
Fix them. It's a never ending battle.
It dragged somebody out.
Good evening, it's November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, six thirty P M. Call the meeting to order, roll call please. Bennett.
Here.
Branch.
Here.
Davis.
Eric.
Farrell.
Derek.
Stevenson. Trinka.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
Woody.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
By the United States of America. To the public. Which is thanks. For our nation. Our God. In this law. That's the chief justice's law.
A couple of the omnibus agenda. Move the pool.
I'll say it.
Roll call. Branch.
Yeah.
Davis.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Stevenson.
He's so not.
He's still not. I have to make this line, otherwise we keep on doing that. Trinka.
Yes.
Washington.
Yeah.
Woody.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Time for audience comments. You can come up. Towards the gate, state your name, and you have five minutes. Nobody on this side will respond to you at this time. Anyone have any comments?
My name's Scott Cox, live over nine Roger Drive. Um, I wanted to come in tonight to, uh, possibly address some confusion on the potential tax levy. Uh, decision that'll be made this evening. I think that there's confusion overall in the community over the. The low increase from last year to this next year. Um, and I think the confusion and the concern could possibly be. One clarity of what an increase is used for. Two, uh, squeezing in a decision just barely under a vote, but we know that the cost of a vote. That could surpass what would be useful to do so. So I think that there can be confusion, confusion. And I saw this on a forum in the community, um, here this past week. On the low amount of the increase, so from. Twenty-three to twenty-four and now twenty-four to twenty-five, what will be voted on this evening? I think the community is confused. That that amount is only, it's, it's under thirteen thousand dollars. And I think that. There's confusion that a four point seven five percent increase is larger or applied in an unusual way or something like that. And so I think what I, what I would formally request, if possible, uh, in this meeting, that there would be a little bit more discussion on and clarification on what exactly. Uh, that increase, uh, would go towards before there would be, uh, a vote this evening. So whether that can be done or not, I just wanted to put it a formal request possibly for that. Maybe this isn't the proper way to do it, but the, the clarification on an increase that total across the city. Is under thirteen thousand dollars is not as large as what we, what, what it seems like when you say a, a term like four point seven five percent. So I think that if there's a little more transparency and clarification on that, it'll extinguish some of the stirring that's. Happens very quickly from week to week between council meetings. Um, and I think that it'll help, uh, quite a bit. Uh, just looking at the difference between what that amount was for the previous fiscal year going into this next one is not. Uh. I, I, I think it's easy to misunderstand what it is and what it represents. So my request tonight is some more clarification before the decision or the vote is cast. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Shane Dakar. I live on Fort 12 Ursula. Um, Mr. Cox and our friends, and I second his request and. Everything he spoke of there. Um, then one other thing I want to speak highly of is the street department. Cause they've done our streets. I live on Ursula and they've done the four streets and made our neighborhood look amazing. So I want to give a kudos there. But one small complaint about it. Um, can we get them to finish the job and strike the walkways on Ursula? And Janet, which is the street behind me. There were a lot of walkers down there and wait, everyone rushed and got it done for the fireworks picnic. So they got those three streets done and then they didn't finish ours.
I'm sure Cody will respond to you.
Sure, sure. Otherwise, it's all good stuff.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. With that, we'll go to older persons. Any of the older persons have anything to say? Comment.
I'd like to comment on, on your, on the, on the, hanging of those. The walkways on Ursula and that. The reason those didn't happen with the, the job itself. Is because that part of the road did not get paved. So that wasn't part of the job. I'm sure Cody can, can get that done and I'm sure he will for us. Uh, but that's why it didn't happen originally with that.
So it's not on the big block.
Wasn't on the, uh, part of the laptop that they laid. So that wasn't in the scope of their job when they.
We just have a lot of McHenry walkers down there.
I agree, cause I live down that way too. I see it all the time.
Well, they, they use Ursula for a little racetrack, McHenry does. So it might help detour the people pulling up to the stop sign, you know?
So. So. But I'm sure Cody can get those done.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah.
But just so you know, and there's clarity on why that wasn't done originally.
I.
Wasn't part of the scope of their job.
Yeah.
Of that job.
I know, I'm thankful majority of my neighbors probably are as well. Mr. Bennett happens to be one, but.
I did bring that up too at the meeting and Cody didn't say he's gonna take all the.
Once, once while the brakes and Gibson. Wanting us to put paint back down.
Oh, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge.
Uh. Last week there was a comment made by one of the old person about the rent being paid by the library. They were concerned and I received a call from the library director and I met with a member of their board today over lunch. Clarify that we're not trying to kick them out of the building. They're, they're concerned that you're. I explained that. Uh, we are gonna have to look carefully at the rents being paid when it comes time for the, uh. Uh, lease we renewed. We have to deal with that. There's a member of the board here. So they're gonna be really more, more active with the attending council meetings. Is there also we share facility?
You putting that on the next committee meeting?
Yeah. Either me, it'll be, should be Pat. Could be me. No, he's one of us. Well, I can.
Should be.
Should be, should be on. Put that on.
Not the part of the head to be done. Exactly. Any other audience? I mean, uh, excuse me, all the persons. Okay. We'll go on to committee reports, streets and alleys, Bobby.
Okay. Well, we, the committee recommended that, that we, uh. Bring about removing four city owned trees, including the removal of the stump and reseeding of the ground. Uh, at a total of fifteen thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh, the trees are located in thirty-four oh four three, I'm sorry. Three oh four East Shoot Street, where there are two trees. And five seventeen Cherry Street, where there are two trees.
I'm. Cody, was one of those on West Main?
Or no?
No. But. Let's see if I'm ready to do it to the end, I'm sure.
No, those, uh, these two trees are over on East shoots. Uh, two hundred or the three hundred block. Uh, these are two larger branches where the majority of the people, right? So one of the kids leaves to come back to War Two Side. They travel from west to east shoots and proceed down and then from east shoots, they either go down Herman, Brits. Some of the main roads and these trees are problematic. They dropped a couple of large branches and we're just trying to get deep out of the way and kind of give this. Safe route for children to get in and out. Um, then the, uh, other trees were over by, uh. The Balvo Realty or Apartments, I believe it's on South Cherry. It's a line right there by, um. I want to say that's Ford. You'll see there's a bunch of vines that have taken over the trees. I think the trees are pretty well dead. And these vines are what's holding what's left of the tree there. And this is another spot where children are coming down and coming across. Um, Ms. Washington pointed it out to us, appreciate that, so we can get this, uh, taken care of from these two trees that that area. Includes the shrubs underneath and the vines to be untangled and cut out as well. So they're not just going to cut the trees and leave all the bushes behind. It's going to be a complete. Uh, wipe out of all the material and then a reseed of that area. It'll also open up the corner where the hydrant is, allowing us to have more access to our local utility.
Okay.
Sherri, you, you did add a fifth tree that didn't on.
Yeah, I had a fifth tree. It may be on her somewhere. On West Main.
West Main. West Main, um, that tree, it came in low enough that it doesn't come to council generally. You guys will talk about it or discuss it, you can, but it was a. Um, a city tree that was also dropping branches on that side of town. If you wanted to elaborate more on what you had.
No, that's fine. I forgot about that, but yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? There's a city, uh, committee recommendation, roll call. Davis.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Trinka.
Yes.
Washington.
Yeah.
Woody.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Bream. Anything else? Bobby.
No, that would be, uh, the Streets Analysis Committee will meet again December second. Twenty twenty-four, six thirty.
Okay. Finance Charlie.
Uh, meet December sixteenth at six thirty. Uh, number one, committee recommends four point seven five increase for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five tax levy. And the only thing I can offer Scott is. The estimate for the twenty-four, twenty-five tax levy. If he wants to look at it. You want to look at it, Scott?
Uh, I've reviewed it already. It just doesn't say what any of it goes to. Is a, a majority or a minority of the portion going to pay increases? Is it going to other areas of, uh, our community? What is the increase being used for?
It's in the general fund.
It says, it says general, but it, when you read, uh, that for clarification, it's, uh. Specifically generic. I mean, it.
When, when the budget is, is prepared, we will see. The funds are allocated to various lines. And all the pot of, the pot of money the city gets. And this is part of the general tax levy. The base levy that the city operates. That's the base. There are other things that pile up on top of it. And this is all that is their base level. They get spread out everywhere.
Is it fair to say that the percentages will remain the same from this year to next or?
It'll be pretty much in the same ballpark. The amount of money will change because the tax, the equal, equal assessed valuation may change. But the, uh, uh, levy amount that four point seven five is an increase. It is not what the levy is. Uh, and, uh, there, it's, I was, I met with the treasurer for the library district today. And they're doing the same thing. And the fire district does the same thing. It's every elected, everybody in the state. Go ahead.
If the city chooses to increase the tax rate more than the statutory amount, there are safeguards in place for that. We have to have what's called a truth in taxation hearing. Uh, there'd be a public hearing, there'd be all kinds of things that will be presented as to why we have to increase the rate. Any more than, I think it's a hundred and five percent of what was, is that right, Lumen?
Mm-hmm.
So four and a half, four, four point seven five falls beneath that. Um, the other reason why, and I believe the term you used was it's intentionally vague or. Actually, you're, you're pretty spot on on that. Um, this revenue source, the, the taxes that come in, when they go into the general fund, they can be used for many different things. Whereas a lot of our funding sources, the dollars are restricted. Like what Cody gets for roads and what, I mean, so there are certain departments where money can only be used for those departments. This comes in, goes into the kitty, so to speak. And then we can use it for whatever it is that we want. So you're actually spot on. It, it is intentionally vague. I wish I had a better answer for you, but it gives this council, your representative crew up here, the, the freedom. To allocate that money to what it needs to be allocated to. I hope that helped a little bit. I mean, it, it's a, it's tracking with what you're thinking, but that's why it, it is what it is.
Sherri, what was our rating last year?
It's four point seven five.
Same as we were thinking.
No, last year we were in the twos, I thought.
No, no, no.
It's all right. The one before that was in the two, sorry.
Okay, over the course of time, we have had zero and then a two percent. Then a four point five percent. Then a seven, uh, four point seven five percent. And that's what we're going for this year. And basically, and how I look at it is that's. Just adding enough to keep up with inflation. Um, you know, we, we buy paper staples, pencils, all that stuff. And when that goes up, which it all does. This is just basically keeping up with that. There, there, there's no special project that this is being used for. Um. If. Cody has a tree that comes down. And it needs to be fixed, we, we have this. But it's not really designated for that. That's how they manage the money, where the money goes.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think just for clarification sake, almost when this is voted on each year. Specifically saying openly to the public, even though you can find this information online, stating the previous year's total. Dating the new total that you're about to vote on. And the public being able to see very easily by reviewing this video, that this is a small amount we're talking about. When we say four point seven five, there's a, there's a flash that happens sometimes.
Yeah.
And I think that just transparency of, hey, this is last year's total that from what we approve, this is what next year's levy is going to apply based on that. And it, I, I think it just. It called the community.
I could tell you, I have my tax bill here for my personal tax bill. And for the city of Lebanon, Lebanon. They get a hundred and four dollars from me. Out of six, uh, out of two thousand six hundred and some dollars.
Yep.
So if you take that and you add a four point seven percent on top of, uh. The, uh, hundred and four, you don't get very much more. You really don't get very much more. And that's where the problem is. We met, we get our income to function. On, I don't even know how big our budget is right now off the top of my head, but it's a lot.
Million.
Yeah. From buying, uh, fuel. Um, that's M, M F T, the motor fuel tax. We get utility tax for everybody using their lights and everything. We get a portion of that. We get some from, uh.
It's the use taxes.
The use tax, sales tax, income tax. Those are parts that the state collects and ships to us. And that's what we keep track of. That's, that's our main money to do anything.
Well, and also as a non-home rule community, we, we can't just tax you. We're. We're a non-home rule community. We can only, uh, do what it is that statutes allow us to do. So a lot of these taxes are collected for us and given to us because we can't tax you on our own. So there's a lot of control there.
Yeah, perfectly good, uh, example of that is the gaming tax. We, when we said they could have gaming machines, the state would only allow us to charge twenty-five dollars a machine. After about, I'm gonna guess four years of that. Now they came out last, I think last a year ago and said, you know what? You can charge what you want. That's what a home rule can do. So they, they, they let up on us a little bit so that we could, you know, get some more revenue from the gambling industry. So. Okay. Any other? All the persons good?
So I have a question. I think I kind of understand what he's saying and I'm, I'm kind of feeling it in as a resident. So. My question would be because I know we have a lot that we can do for is bringing new businesses in. And we already know one side of the highway needs a drainage system. Because we know that Dollar Tree didn't come because of that. Because.
You know, and other reasons.
Well, yeah.
There was up here. I don't know.
Well, it was, I'm just gonna go about, from what I heard sitting here, I don't know. So you say could be other reasons, but we do know what are the main reasons. And now being over public property, the main reason, and then if I'm not correct, maybe you can elaborate, was because of the drainage system.
That was a major thing until they financially.
Well, that's fine.
It don't matter.
They're not, they're not coming and we do have a drainage problem. So. I'm like, with, what he's trying to say is where is that money gonna go? And what I'm trying to say is a resident, and we know that we have bigger issues and we know that we want businesses to come. We need to. We can say we can allow that money to go toward improvements. For the city, for us to drain.
Yes, it goes into the big pot and you guys decide what part of that pot goes where.
Yes. I, I, I get exactly what you're saying when you say the big pot, but can it be a distinguished pot? Because it's. I'm just asking. I'm just. Like you do fun.
Well, you guys, that's, that's a, you, I mean, you guys could make a decision to allocate something from the general fund to something else. But. You, you want the money to go into the general fund, so you have that flexibility, I guess.
I get you.
Okay, anybody else or are you ready to vote on item number one?
If inflation's, uh, four point seven five, you're trying to keep up with it, but it's. Across the board, it's in the twos, why are we at four point seven five? Just out of curiosity, like point three or something or? And then we're asking for four point seven five. So just out of curiosity, I'm sure somebody will be looking up on their phone.
Basically, it's because.
Because you all want to.
Well, no, it isn't because.
Let's face the fact.
There have been, there have been years, there have been years.
It is what it is.
That inflation was far exceeded what we were able to raise. And so this over time, it levels.
We're not talking about yesterday, I guess. Talking about right now. Moving forward, we're to something and you're wanting to ask for four point seven five. I just feel it's unfair to the community. You can't make that decision for all the citizens in this town. How many you can? You can, you got your little, you got your thing, but like Mr. Cox said, let's slide it right under the edge. To where? You know? You're the one writing for mayor next. Very thank you about that.
I'm not the only one, but.
You raise taxes right before the next time, well, there's an election. Or you get another bike and hire you somebody to do good marketing. You raise taxes right before the next time, well, there's an election, or you get another bike and hire you somebody to do good marketing.
This room.
All I got to say.
So, this paper from last week, it has numbers on here, but it doesn't have years on here. And it has like four point seventy, four point seven five percentage.
This is, this is from last year.
What, the two percent?
This is what, right near the first panel.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what our budget was. I mean, our allotment. This is, if you take this and add two percent to it, this is what you get. Take this and add three percent, four, four fifty, four seventy-five. And so, this shows you what you can choose for your percentage rate.
And what was the last three years?
Uh, okay, one was zero, one was two, then it was four fifty, then it was four seventy, uh, four point seven five, then it was four point seven five.
Well, those, no, I'm just, okay, without my question.
What was the total amount last year versus the total amount this year? So, last year in the total amount, it looks like two hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and fifty-two was last year. So, the increase that's being voted on is under thirteen thousand dollars. So, uh, that was the total amount, not of an increase, of actually like what it was, right? For this year voted on last year. Then this year. Voting for the increase would bring it to two hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and eight dollars.
Correct.
So, you're talking about twelve thousand, eight hundred some dollars across the community.
Someone last meeting talked about how much this would be an increase for each individual residential area in town. It seemed to me it was rather insignificant. It was very small.
Yeah. Difference. And I used to, five or six dollars. It depends upon the value of a property. So, again, it's, it's such a small amount per, per, per property in the city. It includes all the residential, the agricultural, the industrial, business, et cetera, all those properties. At this line. And this is what's going on with every taxing body in the state right now. We're not alone. Uh, one year we went with zero. That was because the city council thought the library. Board was going to, was going, was going to ask for improvements to a building to move the library. And the, uh, when, when the proposal came to the city council, there was a glitch with the building. And that it was going to require an additional two million dollars in work on it because of, uh, structural issues. The second board couldn't hold the books.
Yeah.
Bottom line is, that one year set the city behind, and we're still playing catch-up.
Hmm, that's because, from the way this looked, it looked like it wasn't raised last year, because he quoted the same thing that's over here in that.
Yeah, that's what we're, we're, we're always a year behind.
Okay, but my, so I'm, I'm still trying to get some percentages from the previous years. That's all I was asking. At least two or three, that when you, when we, I went on the board, so we raised it.
I think we talked about that at the committee, didn't we?
Yeah, it was four point seven five last year, four point five the year before, and then it was, uh, I think it's a three. And then, uh, the two thousand twenty-one was zero.
So, we go into five percent?
No, no. If we went for five percent, we'd run at least a, that'd have an election for this, a tax, a referendum vote.
No, no, no. No. We don't have, that, that doesn't have to be an election. That means you have to hold a public hearing.
That's a whole public hearing, right?
Truth in taxation, right?
Truth taxation, gotta do the black box.
I'm not quite sure what you're.
We should do that? No.
We don't.
No, there are reasons, there are ones, we don't have time.
If you want, like, some places, they have special years where they wanna build something, or they have to do a special project. Then they'll ask for a public hearing and, and jack the.
I had to do the amount of truth in taxation hearings in the, for the special service area in, uh, outside of Breeze, Illinois. Because their funding completely changed on the ambulance services. And we had to increase their taxes sixty percent year over year, six zero. So, when you have a massive tax increase to cover services, you have to do what's called a truth in taxation hearing. It's all laid out by statute. There's notices in the paper. It's a whole great big thing. Anything under that threshold, which ours is under that threshold, it's a council decision. You're, you have a representative government, you put the tax rate in front, uh, you guys vote, and that's, this is the hearing. That's what we're doing right now. So, that's, that's the difference between when you need to have all this other stuff versus just having a council meeting and voting.
One, one thing we usually think of mind is, we have had, since COVID, we've, and the cost of living went, went up so much during that time period. We've got a lot of people out there in our community that are struggling to decide whether they're gonna eat or put fuel in their car to get to work. Or, or take their medicine that they need to take tonight, but they can't, they're choosing to feed their family. So, that's another thing that we got away. If, when we vote for this, or we vote against this.
But will that increase that we're talking about prevent them from having medicine or anything? The increase is, is rather small. That's what I'm saying.
It is, it is rather small.
Yeah, for everyone.
But if, they're already struggling with it, so just gonna nail.
Does anybody remember what the, the amount was that would cost each individual household?
Well, it all depends on what the cost of your house is.
Yeah, I mean, so, somebody figured some kind of a, oh, I think somebody said it would be like twenty-five cents a house.
First, to the first fall for a small property that sold, not valued very high, it's gonna be under a dollar. Or a property that's in the four hundred thousand dollar range, it might be seven or eight dollars. But if a person's living on a property, that's the four hundred thousand dollar range, I don't think they're having a problem.
Well, that was my point, was that the people who are at the low end of the income area, their increase is gonna be. I hate to say it, insignificant or very, very small.
Cause you've got your commercial property in there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are big, higher valuation.
So, is there a total, what it'll be for years? At what, you guys, like, have around thirteen thousand? Is that what you're selling?
Well, it's figured out at the, for the four, seven, five, it figured out to be twelve thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars.
So, we just took that amount right there and gave you, you guys a statute pay increases. For your, when, next time they're up, does that, everyone's up there's increase, just including the mayors? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
It doesn't.
So, actually, we're, we're gonna raise it, and we're still gonna dip in the funds pool. So, all these talk of this is gonna go towards this, and this is gonna go towards that. We're not fixing anything. We're putting a Band-Aid on a bullet wound here. That's all I gotta say, yeah. I'll raise my hand if I want to talk to anybody. I mean, Aarman, and I just wanna keep my money in my pocket. I mean, you send him my tax bill, it's not very much. He doesn't seem to think people's money as much to him, so.
Okay, are you all ready to vote on this seven point, four point seven five percent increase?
Amended to four point five, you can amend.
Four point seven five.
Four point seven five is what is the committee recommended.
Well, I guess you better call now, because nobody's saying yes. Okay, we could take the call now. Farrell?
Yes.
Trinka?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
Witty?
No.
Bennett? Branch?
No.
Davis?
No.
Okay, you better make up your mind what you're gonna make it, cause I gotta get something to the county, to the courthouse.
Is that something they can do now, or they gotta do?
We have to do it tonight.
Oh, okay, wow.
So, many who voted no, hold on. So, if you're going to do that, that was just got, that just got voted down, so that's dead. So, in order to do anything, someone who voted no needs to do a motion to reconsider. Need a second. We need a majority to even revive this, to talk about it again.
Yeah, I motion to reconsider.
I'll second that.
And Davis. Okay.
Roll call.
Trinka?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
That's the reconsider.
Oh, yeah.
Witty?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Branch?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to vote to amend the tax increase rate from four point seven five to four point two five.
Four point who?
Two five.
You don't even have that in there.
That's not even listed.
What are your choices? So, this is?
We have four, I, two, three, four, four fifth, uh, four and a half, and the four, seven, five that you guys voted down, so.
Today's current rate of inflation is two point six.
Oh, you got three percent.
Three.
I would say three, but that's mine.
If you all have a timer?
Okay.
So. Three's an option. That's an increase of eight thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
So, three or four point five?
Four point two five.
We don't have four point two.
We could do it, just because we don't have another.
We're going from two, two hundred and seventy, two seventy-sixty-two, with the three, make it two seventy-eight, seven seventy-two. What are you talking about? I'm not talking about the four point seventy, four point seven five is two hundred and eighty-three thousand, which I round that out. And just say, uh, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So, if we went down to the three percent, makes it ten thousand. Why are you looking like that? Two hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
I'm trying to see a number that you're reading on this.
I'm just rounding, yeah, but I was rounding it off in the biggest number.
She was gonna increase it with eight thousand, one hundred and twenty for three percent.
Yeah, eight thousand in the lower one.
Just pick something.
I'll move three percent increase on the tax levy.
I'll second it.
Is this a three?
Three.
Witty?
Witty second.
Yes. Okay.
Washington, we vote, or we gotta wait next week?
Washington.
Yeah.
Witty?
Yes.
Bennett?
Uh, yes, sorry.
Branch?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Trinka?
Yeah.
Three percent.
Thank you for getting that done, so I can get it to the courthouse.
Okay, you ready for number two?
Yes.
Okay, committee recommends using fifteen thousand dollars from the business district funds to increase expansion of the enterprise zone to overlap the business district.
Recommendation.
Recommendation, so, roll call. Witty?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Branch?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Trinka?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Okay, number three, Charles.
Three, uh, committee recommends the denial of the chamber of commerce request to use economic development funds from the utility tax to pay for advertising. On the fifty and four electronic billboard.
So, yes means no.
Yes, correct. Yes means no.
Yes means no.
Yes means you don't want, yeah.
Bennett?
So, you wanna, no means yes, you approve with that comment, right?
If you don't, yes, means you want to deny it.
Yes means you want to deny it.
Oh, that was, it's so confusing like that, because number one, what it's asking is, uh, can we use the money? The chambers use money to advertise, use city money, and the answer should be no. It should never be worded like that. Because that is a manipulation and trying to.
That's how they, that's how they do that.
Well, that's crazy. So, with the way that is worded, we should just say no, they cannot use it. Is that the one? Cause I'm confused.
No, it says.
I don't like that.
Recommends the denial of the chamber of commerce request. They requested it, and we're saying no at your committee, so you denied it.
Oh, yes, she denied it.
I'm just, uh, I'm just, don't understand why they would even ask that. Cause that don't even sound like a.
Hang on a second, I'm gonna say something here. We, we deny it, we breach deny it, because we gave the chamber four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
To pay for part of the marquee, and then they can advertise on the marquee that we put four thousand dollars into, or they could use. The marquee, whatever you wanna call it, the digital sign at the bank if they want to.
Yes.
But, but the five thousand dollars we had was in, in the utility tax was for infrastructure.
Right.
It's not for, not to give them to use for advertising.
So, it means yes, you wanna deny giving them the money.
Okay.
Yes.
Branch.
Okay.
Yes, I'm denying giving them privilege.
Davis?
Yeah.
Farrell?
Yes.
Trinka?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Witty?
Yes.
Anything else for the finance?
Well, that's it.
Okay, Oregon's George.
Oregon says nothing tonight. We will at the next meeting, uh, open meeting on December second at six thirty P M.
Okay, water and sewer?
Who had something about that? Who was saying something about that?
Charlie.
Charlie. Water and sewer?
Oh, the water and sewer, yeah, that's, Pat's not here. He twisted his ankle or something, or some kind of excuse. Committee recommends extending the generator express contract and maintenance of the generators at the waste water treatment plant. And the booster station for another three years at the cost of four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars per year.
Charlie, that's the same price that we paid last year.
Right.
Right. So, for three more years, we're up to the same price.
Yes.
Sounds like a good deal.
Okay, recommendation, roll call.
Branch?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Trinka?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Witty?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Cementer, Mr. Trinka?
Uh, I haven't heard anything more about the medallions they eighteen oh four from Kerry, Chris. Uh, the other thing is, I wasn't sure whether, uh, Cody was able to cut the grass, uh, he had talked about one more time. But probably he hasn't, I'm just guessing, so.
He has not. Anything else?
That's it. And we meet, um, December the fourth.
How about second? Okay. You might be alone on the fourth. This, uh, health and safety, Ms. Washington, what you got about this conference?
Okay, um, basically, uh, do nothing. I haven't been able to meet with, uh, Ms. Branch. Due to circumstances beyond our control.
Okay.
So, um, our next meeting will be December the sixteenth.
Okay. Public property?
No, I'm, we will meet on December the second, and Ms. Leland, I won't email you, you can put that. What we just discussed about public property, library, and something. Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
The ambulance contract.
Okay, she wants the ambulance contract. Personnel, Ms.?
I have a question on this. If you're kind, this, like, with the discussion about rental of the library. Be an open meeting or enclosed meeting until?
We're gonna talk about setting rental price at the closed.
Yeah.
So, we can have that on next week's.
That's any protective issue.
Just wanted to make sure.
For sure.
Yeah, during Cal ten. Personnel, Mr. But, uh, go ahead.
Uh, nothing for this evening. We'll be, uh, December the sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, six thirty.
Okay, Laura?
Okay, the resolution approving the estimated tax levy for twenty twenty-four payable in twenty twenty-five. For the city of Lebanon, St. Clair County, Illinois. That resolution, uh, from the past vote will be corrected from the four point seven five, and it'll be three percent.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Just present for a quick.
I, I have a motion.
Or a motion, sorry.
I'll move it.
Mr. Bennett, second. George, Mr. Bennett. Forgot, all these. Yeah. Okay. Davis?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Trinka?
Yes.
Washington?
Yeah.
Witty?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Branch, yeah. Let's see, everybody.
Or something, didn't?
No, no, that's next then.
Next one.
This resolution's gotta be an ordinance, that's why we had to do it tonight. Um, you, everybody's got their personnel manual?
Oh, okay.
There's three pages that need to be signed. One will be, fifty, page fifty-eight, page sixty, page seventy-five. One is the firearms ordinance for having firearms on, uh, our campuses. And one is for the, uh, brass myth bullying. And one is for the total thing of the manual, that you read the entire thing.
That's on the very back page.
Very back page. All three of those have to be pulled out, signed, and given to me. Fifty-eight?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, sixty, eighty, and seventy-five. You assign them, you give them to Luann, they're gonna be copied back, and you'll have them in your file. And when you take the harassment thing, and you get your little certificate, you can bring that to me, I'll zero off it. You can have the original if you want it, and the other one goes in your file. Um, I'll look for your, see if you did that.
We, we, you should be receiving, uh, the spreadsheet that has.
Well, I haven't gotten one thing from.
I will contact them when I was gone.
Okay. What I'm doing is, I'm taking it, and I'm stamping my signature on it to go in your file, so that I know, and, or I should say, so Michelle knows that I have put you down on the list for completing it. Method to our madness here, or madness to our method, whichever you. Anything else? Uh, not for me.
My stuff.
How about you?
I have nothing.
Nice.
Okay, undermine, um, Bobby.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we nominate, uh, Charlie Witty to take over while the mayor has, uh, as mayor from Tim, starting December third, Tuesday through December eighth, Sunday, or until determined by the city council.
It may be extended, it just depends. Need a second?
Second.
I got a hand raised first, I'm sorry, George.
That's fine. I don't care.
Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Take my stuff. Any discussion?
Will he continue giving us chocolate candy?
I hope so. Yes, I hope so.
I'm sorry for the levity.
I'm gonna switch it out for X life, so.
Okay, roll call. Farrell?
Yeah.
Trinka?
Yes.
Washington?
Yeah.
Witty?
Yes.
Branch?
I mean Bennett.
Yes.
Now Branch. Davis.
Yes.
Okay, so like Glenn said, everybody has their personnel manuals. The superintendents will be getting the personnel manuals for your folks, so, just make a note that page fifty-eight, sixty, and seventy-five need to be copied and brought up here. Also, the, um, harassment training all needs to be done by the end of December. I know, fancy pants, Ms. Washington did it first. Yeah, yeah, she did it first. So, um, it's, I, I did mine today, I'm ready. So anyway, I think that's it, uh, thanks Charlie, hopefully, everybody behaves themselves. And hopefully, I'll be back on the ninth for that council meeting. Thank you, Department Heads Chief?
Is there a website, if I'm not, I hold that, is there a website?
Luann was sending you, um, the, a main one, and on the, on the letter, it's got something that you just click on it. If you send all of your, um. I'll send it to you tomorrow, Ken.
If you would. Okay, uh, the only thing I have is, uh, we have a couple of groups that are not just in this immediate area, but the outside areas too, that are basically getting into vehicles, open garages, those type of things. I want to remind everybody, we're getting into the holiday season, which is the season to steal. And lock your doors, please, lock your garages. Please don't leave purses in your cars, wallets in your cars, definitely guns in your cars. Change money laying out so where they can look into your car, cause that's attracting them. And then they get into unlocked car, there, most of the cases are unlocked vehicles that we're getting, not just here, but outside the area. Um, so don't ent- entice them by leaving stuff, computers, whatever that they can see. So please lock things up, take things in your house. Happy Thanksgiving.
Seems to be one of your Christmas gifts. Okay, um, water, Penny? No, okay. Streets, Cody?
Uh, two things I wanna touch on real quick, um, one, obviously, happy Thanksgiving, but the streets department would not, like to receive any more leaves from your yard. I know it's very tempting to blow them out in the road, and the streets we per go by, but, um, it's not what we're doing. Uh, we're there to pick up the leaves that are automatically falling into the road, so keep your leaves in your yard, I know it's tough sometimes, because there's only a city tree in the area, but, when you do that, that goes into my storm range and clogs them up, and then I have to get Penny out when it's fifteen degrees, and she has to use water to unclog these. And I don't think she's gonna be happy with me if I gotta call her. Uh, step two in this process, uh, we are mowing for the final time. Uh, we try to heat down the areas of grass, you'll see the boom, we're starting out in Oak Grove School Road, we cleared some areas you can see getting on Oak Grove School Road, or outboard, I think it's a very bad area, you can probably attest to that. Uh, right now, I made it down to water to, working our way through, so hopefully, we get all that dressed up, and then we'll finish with True Value Drive. And that way, all the weeds are mowed down for the rest of the year, and hopefully, gets a better start for coming on, mowing grass next year, that's all I have.
Cody, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Can one burn one's leaves in the ditch?
No. No, you're not supposed to burn on city ground.
Okay, well, I just was wondering, since I saw that happening.
Yep.
And I just knew that I was gonna get an argument, that if I said anything to said person. What about burning in general?
You're supposed to only burn limbs in your yard, you're not supposed to burn, the leaves have been outlawed as an ordinance, before I was here.
It's got certain days, Monday?
Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday morning.
Saturday till one. Till December fifth. Is that what it is? Pardon, I, cause I know the fire chief never did lift. I agree with you, Penny. Burn ban still on, that they asked me to send out. And somebody was burning today, and it was like.
There you go.
Yeah, I never saw, I never saw a burn ban lifted either.
There are now companies that will come back, give your leaves up, if you bring them within three meter curve, I just had a dozen this past week. They came out three times for a total of a hundred and twenty dollars, so, uh, I've gotta sign in my hours if you wanna know, one of the companies that does, so.
Oh, I just got a message, a burn ban was lifted on Halloween. I missed that, but I wasn't burning. But that might be something you guys wanna talk to committee on, having a total burn ban. No. Other towns do it? Um, any, uh, no, no accountant, unfinished business. Committee recommends to surplus the loft strand, company generator located at City Hall. Did I call that by the right name? Okay. So, we would like to, um, or the committee recommends to surplus it, any discussion? Just roll call.
The generator.
Yeah. The big one sitting out there in the garage, it's, Cody can, he knows all the regs on it.
Can't be wrong, we're sitting. It is a nineteen fifty-two air force wagon generator, that does not have the wheels under it anymore. Uh, it's been in their fire hall for ever.
That was along up west of Belville Street, working.
For OSHA regulations, you cannot run a gas powered engine, without having it sealed off and proper ventilation, so when it ran, it would smog through the back offices, and choke everyone out, and then you miss your red. So, we've opted not to use it. And we're looking to having something to back it up when we need it to run the essentials, and we're gonna focus it on City Hall more than anywhere else. Cause that actually runs more than just City Hall. So the goal would be, is if there is any national disaster declared, if we can have the City Hall up and running, that we can maintain operations as needed.
Choking.
Hey Cody, you gonna try to sell it, or donate it to the historical society?
They might, yeah, the historical society might actually take it. Fire belongs to the Smiths.
Okay. So roll call on them. Trinka?
Yes.
Washington?
Yeah.
Witty?
Yes.
Bennett?
And we do that, we got the second one first?
No, we did the first one, then the second one.
We gotta recommend it, that you do it, then we vote on the resolution.
Okay, yeah.
Or you? Oh, or one, one, let's see, Ben?
Yes.
Branch, yeah. Davis?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Okay. Present for approval, ordinance declaring the, pers- personal property of the city of Lebanon surplus and authorizing it sale and or disposal, specifically a generator located at City Hall. Any motion? Or motion?
I heard branch.
Oh. Washington?
Yeah.
Witty?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Branch?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Trinka?
Yes.
Okay, any new business? Move to a ju- She wants something, I think she wants to go home.
The only business that we have is, when these organizations set up, I think we need to reiterate for them to take that.
I agree. That'll have to come during. Yeah, we got something else, too.
I'm glad you brought that up. We got an email from I dot, from Ruann Stelf, who is retiring.
Phone call.
I didn't forget it, Luann took it from Ruann. I dot does not allow, I want to make this very clear, again, when I reiterate this. You cannot block a state highway when you have an event. So, if you're in charge of an L I A or committee or whatever, whoever, and you get permission to close the road down, you got permission from the city of Lebanon. Not District Eight. The state recognized that there was a cone and barricade on their highway, and called us to remind us that it's not our road.
On the left-hand turn going north on Route Four. Turning on.
No turning the light on, and no putting barricades on the turn lane on State Route Four.
On Route Four.
Now, who done that, man, that?
Uh, we're not even gonna name some names.
It's, it's not the part of the name, it's that, you, you don't do it.
I know, but that's kinda the thing you don't block, no.
No, they've always done that.
Really, always done it, but did they request?
No, they've always done it.
No, no.
No, I know what you're saying, and I'm answering your question.
They used to not request it.
They didn't request it, they've always just done it. Oh.
And, and I dot is here to say, do not do it again, and I don't wanna find out what happens. They do it again, because it's not gonna be on the city.
No, so I do have a question on that, uh, with I dot. Um, have they been out to measure the street, or do anything, or clarify?
We are gonna measure it, uh, I talked with Jeff from T W M, but it's pretty clear and concise that, there's two different measurements on the north and south side of the road, but it is one hundred feet where the concrete starts. And if you look at your, uh, paper, if you still have it, it goes to the handicap ramp. And for that reasoning is, is if you park before the handicap ramp, and a vehicle needs to access that, or unload in that area, it is a unload zone, or unloading zone, you're in a handicap area, or you're in a no parking, that's why it's no parking, it's easier to have it that way. I know, uh, Mr. Wilkin, we talked about it a little bit, uh, and he talked to you guys as well, it's just no parking. With that being said, it is your road. I recommend not, I recommend not to, but if there is an accident, it will come back to this.
Right. Okay, well, okay, thank you, you answered both. Anything else? Adjourn?
Move to adjourn voice.
Second. Oh. All favorite German, say aye. Anybody abstain? Okay.